By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Concha Hocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Roll call.
Councilmember Totino.
Present.
Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Councilmember Sokolowski.
Here.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Stokely.
Here.
Vice President Flanagan.
Here.
President Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Aronson.
Here.
Thank you.
Pray for council.
O divine master, in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no council president announcements, so we will go straight to presentations. So we'll do our interviews for our boards and commissions.
Just as a quick reminder, President Leonard, we had an executive session involving a legal matter and personnel matter. And then Ms. Rogers, if you could get Julie Dixon out in the hallway. She's sitting on the bench. The first candidate up for consideration is Julie Dixon, who is being reappointed, considered for reappointment to the Marywood Park Commission.
Would you introduce yourself to the residents?
Hi, everyone. My name's Julie Dixon. I live on East Ninth Avenue for going on 13 years.
And why would you like to be on the Marywood Park Commission again?
Because I really am looking forward to seeing through all the exciting things we talked about over the past year. I think that we had a lot of great ideas, and our team really came together nicely. And watching it now, the tree went in right before the holidays, and I have a six-year-old that was having a party on the way to school this morning when he saw the fences around the playground. I'm deaf in that ear now. So I'm just really excited to see it through to the centennial celebration that we're working toward.
Okay. Is there any particular issue that you think council should address concerning the park or any of its facilities?
I think that we're working towards the biggest issue, which was it wasn't a super kid-friendly park starting. So I think that we're making huge progress towards that and really making it more of a community center. I know it's, you know, ideal for a lot of families in the area, especially in the hot months with all the trees. And I think with all the improvements that are being made, I think we're really going to see a lot more foot traffic to that area. So it'll be really appealing for... I mean, my husband went for a run tonight after work, and he said, "Concha Hocken's really young." Because of so many families and kids out, and I just think that that is going to be such an ideal setting. And the kind of setting I think we want in Concha Hocken to build towards for all the young families that are moving into the area.
Great. Does anybody else have any questions for Julie?
I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Oh, thank you for what you do.
Mr. Beckel here. If you could please come up to the podium. Again, we have three current vacancies on the EAC. Tonight you have two candidates who have applied and expressed interest in being interviewed. Mr. Beckel is one of them, so welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello.
Me, Mr. Beckel. Why do you... Why would you like to serve as a member of the EAC?
Well, so I initially applied just really looking at the mission statement of the EAC, and it's something that I thought, you know, I could really embrace, and really we could all embrace of, you know, we all benefit from a healthful and improving environment, living environment here in the borough. And subsequently, having been able to attend some of the meetings, I couldn't be more excited to be involved with the group of people that are involved with the EAC currently. It's a great, great group of people, ambitious, thoughtful, and I really think, you know, it's something that's going to be doing really good things in the coming months and hopefully years ahead. And I'd just like to be involved in it.
You've been currently attending meetings, you said?
That's right.
Okay. So you understand what their mission, vision, value is for the borough?
That's right.
Okay. All right, great.
Can you tell us about a specific initiative of the EAC that you've seen over the last couple of meetings that you want to be a part of?
Sure. So the... We've talked a bit about the Rain Barrel Program, and looking to kind of use that as a vehicle for education, both children and adults alike. And actually, in my career, that's stormwater management is something that I've been more recently exposed to in my current position. Company is a... It's really a Stephen Oring company, but it has substantial land holdings. And part of that, as you all know, comes with stormwater management obligations. And it's really eye-opening, the difference that can be made with, you know, some different engineering fixtures that really just benefit the ambient environment.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The final individual for consideration this evening is Ms. Mallon. Thank you for your time.
Sure. Hello.
Hi. Good evening. And I'm sorry, and your address?
I live on Washington Street at Riverwalk.
Okay. And why, again, why would you like to serve as a member of the EAC?
So I just started going to meetings in November. It was something that I had been watching for a while, and I found myself with some extra time due to an injury, so I wasn't able to be as physically active anymore. So I figured, rather than stare at that, you know, explore other areas that I'm interested in and get involved, and this was one of them. So that's why I initially went to the meeting, starting in November. So I've attended three now. And it was just something that seemed of interest to me. I liked everybody that was there and thought we had some good initiatives going on. I thought I could bring some, you know, with my professional experience. I have no environmental experience at all. I am a school counselor. So one of the questions that you had asked previously was, what do you want to get involved in? And one of the things that I think I could really help with is, one of our initiatives is forming a partnership with Concha Hocken Elementary, and I work in a middle school setting, just to get them involved in the community garden a little bit more and involved in the EAC. So I could absolutely do that. I do that all day.
Anyone else have any questions?
So one of the goals of the EAC is to become more integrated with the community and have a much bigger online and social media presence. Can you just tell us a little bit of what you've done even in the past three months to help the EAC with that?
Sure. So one of the things that I was kind of charged with was volunteer recruitment. So I've created just Facebook invites for all of our meetings, getting that out, posting on our page. We are having the trail cleanup in April, made an event for that, used Mr. Aronson's flyer that we then turned into an electronic forum to, you know, disperse that to the community. We've also looked at different settings for our meetings to make that maybe a little more enticing and just accessible to people, just to bring them out and get them interested.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so. Any others?
Anyone else?
Thank you for volunteering.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Would you like to do the consent agenda?
Next on the... Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. There are two items for consideration: to approve and adopt the December 20th special meeting and regular meeting minutes, the January 2nd, January 3rd, and January 17th meeting minutes; and to approve the January ending treasurer's report and accounts payable in the amount of $748,939.26.
I will make the motion to adopt A, the meeting minutes, special meeting minutes for January 2nd, 3rd, and 17th, as well as approving the January ending treasurer's report and accounts payable reports.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business. We are... First, A, consider 304 Hector Street zoning hearing board application.
Ms. Stettler, if you could please come to the podium and introduce the application? Thank you.
Thank you. This is an application for property at 304 East Hector Street. Many of you may be familiar, are familiar with it. It's the old Moser Glass Works. This property is approximately 3,915 square feet. It pretty much fills the whole site. And behind it, there's a changing grade. There's also Angel Alley with structures on it. It has been on the market for quite a few years, and we have had numerous inquiries into uses for this, including everything from condominiums, offices, craft beer production, wine production with retail sales and tasting rooms, and also a firm which wanted to use the building to show off architectural elements, historic architectural elements. The proposed project is to take the property and convert it into four condominiums. The zoning relief that is required is only a change of non-conforming use. The property is currently used for a plumbing business and warehouse activities. This would be a change to a residential use, which is more appropriate... This is in the borough residential. To zoning district, proposal is to have off-street parking on the first level of the building. And not... The building is not being converted into a number of units that could not support the parking. So Mr. Ozerowski is here, and the developers are here, and I'll let them explain to you their project.
Good evening. My name is George Ozerowski. I represent Concha Hocken Land Development. As Chris said, it's kind of a straightforward project. You're probably all familiar with the building as it sits on Hector Street. These are just some photographs of the current condition of the building, along with what it's kind of, it's being used for right now, which is kind of a plumbing warehouse. They store their trucks inside of it. They store the materials inside of it, that type of thing. What the applicant is proposing to do is basically redo the facade of the building, put it, make it so that the doorways would be the entranceway. This one would be the entranceway to go into the building. As Chris mentioned, all the parking would be on the first floor of the building, two stairwells. The parking would suffice. There's one thing that might have to happen is currently the curb cut is here. It'll probably have to be moved to here. But the same amount, it would just be one curb cut, so the same parking on the street would be available. And the architecture, as you can see, is designed to make it much more of an appealing building, especially its current condition. As far as units go, there would be four units. They each have a one-bedroom on the first floor, and then a loft area where there would be units on a one-bedroom on the second floor, along with a rooftop deck, not necessarily extending from the side of the building, but so that they can go out and actually have an area here, and here, and here, and here, to be able to go outside and kind of get some fresh air, that type of thing. So overall, we believe it's a substantial improvement as to what is there currently. As Chris mentioned, we're going from one non-conforming use to another, but it is residential nature, which is what the area is intended to be as far as the zoning goes. So we would hope we would get your support, or at least a neutral position as far as the zoning application goes.
Access to the first-floor parking, all from the front of the building, an in-and-outdoor kind of?
Exactly. We'd be coming in this way, and then the parking stalls are here, 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 and here. And our engineers plotted it out to make sure that, you know, the circulation is sufficient to be able to enter and exit the facility.
Would we have to do any changes in the on-street parking by that building from the perspective of distance for views for cars turning in and out, because Hector Street's one-way? So for, like, sight of vision?
No, I don't believe this could be an issue, because right now they are going in and out of the driveway as it is.
Okay.
So it's kind of an existing condition.
Okay.
As it is. Obviously, we haven't got through land development yet, because we're just going through zoning, but there's nothing that's, that has been brought to our attention that we're calling for any concerns with that.
Okay.
Are there cutouts in the wall for ventilation?
Are there cutouts for the walls for ventilation?
There are windows, right?
There are windows?
Yeah.
You mentioned to the rear of the property is Angel Alley. Does it have any access to Angel Alley, or it... There is?
Yeah. Up at the top. Up to the next. It actually is.
Oh, okay.
Right here, there is a ramp that actually goes across Angel Alley, but nothing that you can drive with the elbow onto.
But you could walk out. So for, say, fire or something, that would be another exit point.
Exactly. Besides the two stairs.
Okay.
I live right across the street from... I don't have access to Angel Alley.
Excuse me.
We've got a backyard. We don't have access to back out, because it's a house on top of where we're at. But their idea... I was talking to Mark. Their idea is a great idea with the thing that, what they're doing now, and with that thing, which has been sitting there forever. Nobody doing nothing, taking up parking. Take the parking, of course, they already have used it. So I think that's a great idea, myself.
Yeah, I appreciate the adaptive reuse of an existing building and to bring character back to that section of Hector Street, so.
I appreciate the comments.
Is this something council would like to consider this evening, or would you like to wait and...
So what we were looking for is a motion to recommend for support or non-support that would then go to the zoning hearing board.
I'll make the motion to support.
Am I seconding it?
All in favor?
I have to recuse myself.
Okay.
In relationship with the applicant.
Okay. Opposed?
Who has it?
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Mr. Stokely, the recusal form is in your packet.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Next item on the agenda is Ms. Stettler again, in relation to the submittal of the Monco 2040 grant specifically, in relation to the exterior porch at Marywood Park. Chris, if you could just give a brief synopsis of the 2040 grant and then the exact particulars of what we are asking permission to submit.
Monco 2040 Implementation Grant Program was established by the county about three years ago. We were one of the first recipients of it in Concha Hocken, and we used the money to redo the parking area up at Suckworth Park and take care of a number of drainage problems there. The program was established to help to implement the recommendations of the county comprehensive plan. And in a way, it has replaced revitalization grants that were available to communities. It's once a year. You can apply for up to $200,000, but their average grant is around $100,000. We are proposing to submit an application to replace, to restore, the exterior porch on two sides of Marywood Park House. This fits into... You have to fit into one of the three areas that are identified in the comprehensive plan, and this fits very nicely into connected communities. They also have primary focus areas, and it's, the more you hit these areas, supposedly the better chance you have of being funded. And we are part... We fit very nicely into supporting downtowns and community destinations. There's also interest in enhancing function, prominence of cultural venues through exterior improvements, and a focus on the preservation of historical properties. I spoke with people at Montgomery County Planning Commission about this, and they haven't funded anything like this before, but it seems to fit into all of their requirements. So we, hopefully, we'll have a little bit of luck on this. The total cost, we have rough costs from the architects who are working on Marywood Park House, and the total cost of the project would be $185,000. We would have two years to implement this project, which is reasonably doable. It's a little bit, might be a little bit tight in some areas. Construction costs are around $170,000. Engineering, design, construction supervision are around $15,000, which makes the total cost $185. We can apply for 80% of the construction costs. We can use the engineering, design, and construction management piece as match. So we have a match of $37,000, and the application would be for $148,000. So your worst-case scenario right now would be, if they give us $100,000, which is their average grant, then the borough would be responsible for $85,000 rather than 37. We asked for more than $100,000. The first time we applied, and they cut it back and said, "Can you do it with 120?" And we did a very good job with their money and a large contribution from the borough. One of the portions of this application is you have to have a resolution from the municipal governing body to authorize the application. So we're proposing that we apply for the $148,000 for this with a 20% match of $37,000. So you would need a motion and need to sign the resolution.
I need a motion.
Questions? Comments?
Anyone have any questions?
No. I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
It's the Chris Stettler Show tonight, so.
I'm sorry.
Next item on the agenda is to consider 322 East Eighth Avenue zoning hearing board application.
This is an application that was previously filed and then asked to be continued because there was to be an amended plan presented. 322 East Eighth Avenue is in the borough residential one zoning district. It's an 8,400-square-foot lot, and what is on the lot now is a garage and a single-family semi-detached dwelling. The developer is the same as your previous developer, and they are proposing to subdivide the property, leaving the semi-detached house on one lot and building a single-family detached house on the other lot. In subdividing the property, the project requires two variances and a special exception. The variances are for the... In subdividing the lot, the lot with the semi-detached dwelling on it will only be 20 feet wide, and the ordinance requires 25 feet, meets the zoning requirements in other areas. Proposal is to put a parking pad in the rear off the alley, which will provide off-street parking for that, which would be lost by the subdivision of the lots. The second one, although I don't think the developer agrees with me, but there is a requirement for a front yard setback variance. The engineer planner for this project has used the average setback on the north side of East Eighth Avenue. The zoning ordinance requires either 25 feet front yard setback or the established building line. Based on what the engineer provided, there isn't an established building line. So this is really something that makes sense to grant a variance for, because it would keep the streetscape much better than if you have one house at setback 25, just because there was no established building line. The special exception is for a size of a garage. There's a 435-square-foot garage that is proposed. 350 square feet is the maximum permitted. So they would need a variance for that, and that is something that has generally been approved by the zoning hearing board. One other comment is a curb depression with a driveway leading to the old garage, which would be demolished, is going to be removed, which would add on-street parking. And the alley, in order to accommodate the parking pad at the rear of the lot with the existing dwelling, would have to be extended so that there would be access onto the parking pad. Mr. Ozerowski and Mr. Jones are here, and you can ask them any questions you wish.
Good evening. George Ozerowski again. This is probably the best picture of the front of the property here. As you can see, there's an existing garage that is here. There's a driveway that runs up to that garage. The property, if you look at it, kind of looks like naturally there's a lot next door to it. And there's a few examples of Concha Hocken like that. This is the view, just so you have a perspective from the alleyway down, looking at that same garage, or this was probably just as good of a one. So that's kind of from the behind, looking at it. Existing features, as Chris stated, was this is the existing driveway, curb cut here. It runs up to the existing garage that is there. This is the half of the house, the twin, that's currently on the site. What the applicant is proposing is that we would do away with that curb cut. We'd build a single-family home here. We would construct a new garage that's actually bigger, and for this lot, not number two. As Chris said, we, you know, we kind of made it so that the front of the building would logically fit in with the rest of the street, as opposed to setting it back. The accessway to both lots would be coming from this alleyway here to the new garage, and then from here to the new parking pad that will be constructed for the twin. So where the relief comes into question is, number one, the proposed garage, and I think you guys know at this point that your zoning ordinance by accessory uses can only be 350 square feet. The math doesn't work to build a garage for two cars. And so I would encourage you someday to take a look at that.
Oh, we are. It is in process.
Thank you. And then the other question... The other issue is the side yard setback for the existing twin. I think the most important thing to tell you there is, is actually, we meet the side yard setbacks. So if the side yards are actually met, it's just a thin house to begin with. So we're actually complying, so, you know, all the setbacks are there. And, you know, we're trying to look at creating a new single-family home for the borough.
How much space in between those two homes? Do you have five feet?
Oh, yes. Yeah. We made the side yard setback for five feet, and then it is another... Mark, how far is it from here to this building?
What's up, Chris?
No, it appears that there is five feet on the side of the single-family detached dwelling and five feet on the side of the twin.
Okay.
Which meets the setback requirement.
Yes, it does.
So basically, you've got 10 feet between the two houses.
Okay.
The variance that they're needing is for the lot with.
Right. Okay.
Anyone else have questions?
Same thing with this item. We would need a motion to support or non-support that would be forwarded to the zoning hearing board.
I would make a motion to support.
I would second it.
All in favor?
I have to recuse myself. The applicant is an employee of my company. Thank you.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the single home.
Yes.
And addressing the parking issue.
The last thing on our agenda is consider... Two things. Consider transitioning police and fire pension assets to the PFM multi-manager funds. I believe we need a...
So Bickram was here at the last meeting. He presented the idea of transitioning to the multi-manager funds from the current funds. I will say that one of my concerns is the newness of this proposal, along with the increase of the fees. So something to consider is the timeline of potentially approving this later on, when we have more industry data to evaluate how the new multi-manager asset funds do on the market and how they are performing, and also to gather more information on the fees and whether or not those fees can go down and decrease to match what the current fees are right now. So I'm not saying that my recommendation would be to not approve it. I'm just saying not approve it now. So my recommendation would be that you make a motion to maintain your current asset allocation through PFM.
How did we make out on feedback from the police and fire?
Spoke... In speaking with them, I believe they agree. The lieutenant is here tonight. We spoke directly about it. I think the increase in fees is a concern, as well as the transition with it being so new, especially considering the success the accounts have had currently. Lieutenant, if you have anything you'd like to add?
We did speak in PFM. We can ask them to preserve on Bickram's. And we understand what they're trying to do, but, you know, it's not the time, and the fees are a big deal. It's spending a lot more money. And we're doing well now, and we'll see.
Is there any restriction on how often we can look at what funds we're in or what program we appoint or approve with them?
So we meet with them on a quarterly basis. They actually come to our office, and they sit with both of the, both the police and the fire and the administration. We can give them feedback at that point, but Bickram is available to us whenever I call. So I don't have a concern with that. I just have a concern with a justification for the switch now and being able to have some more data to actually concretely say it's the right decision.
Well, I will make a motion to maintain the current police and fire pension assets until we've collected the necessary data.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Evening. Starting on the agenda for this evening is considering appointing applicants for board and commission vacancies.
So for consideration this evening is reappointment of Julie Dixon, and then any consideration if you'd like to appoint the two individuals who interviewed with you this evening, Mr. Bickle and Ms. Mallon. If you could handle them separately, the reappointment and appointment, if you're ready to do so.
I would make the motion to reappoint Julie Dixon to the Marywood Park Commission.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make the motion to appoint Mr. Bickle to the EAC.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Do we have the third motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone for public comment this evening? Would you like to come up and state your name and address for us, please?
My name is Deborah Stovall, 76 Poplar Street. I'm a lifelong resident here, and in the past couple of years, I noticed that the parking or lack of parking is getting worse in that area. When I look around to see what's going on, most of it is because of the light industry that's there. And I think the worst offender is the auto detailing place. They have about maybe anywhere from four to six cars parked there permanently. Some with flat tires, some with expired stickers, others are just parked there, and there is, they're just there permanently. Also, they also park on the neighbor's yard. They're just there.
So when you say in the yard, you mean in the yard?
In the yard, in the actual yard on Poplar Street. They are there. Also, next door, the neighbor has a handicap parking space. They've been gone for over two months now, and that parking, handicap parking sign is still there, so that's taken up a space. But the auto detailing space is really, they've just taken over that whole area. So they park on the neighbor's yard, they park right on Poplar Street, they park behind the building. They're just all over, and the cars are there permanently. So that's a big issue, and so also, they have a van. So one of the things I wanted to know is their commercial parking allowed overnight and contra-hawken? Because we have three. We have the auto detailing, we have a pool place, and we have the restaurant with three vans out there that are taking up parking spaces overnight. They're there all the time anyway. They're just there. So I'm not sure if they allow commercial overnight parking on a public street.
They have most of it, I'm sorry.
There's no restriction.
There is no restriction for overnight parking?
But we have right now, it's Poplar Street, right? Some of the other issues we may be able to address.
Excuse me?
Some of the other issues we may be able to address.
But you're saying that they are allowed to park there? Okay. The second one is the company across the street from Aubrey Collins Park. Now, there's about maybe four to five parking spaces there. I understand they have a sign there that says, "No parking between the signs." That's about three or four parking spaces. They also have an additional handicap parking space next to it. There is no one handicap. They have it there for the company. I understand that they do need that space because he makes a wide right turn. But the company is only open from like 6:00 to 3:00 or 6:00 to 4:00. So after hours on the weekends, there's about five or six parking spaces that are unused. And so what can we do about that? I think that we can maybe put a sign up there saying, "No parking from Monday through Friday, 6:00 to 4:00 or 6:00 to 6:00." But it's like you're being held hostage. There is no parking down there.
So the streets are not private, correct? The business, in front of the business, the streets are not private?
They are not, as long as the business is in front of an alleyway.
Say that again?
As long as the business is not in front of an alleyway, you're right.
Okay. So they would have had to have permission from us to put signs up for no parking there?
Oh, absolutely.
So those signs are really our signs? So we could look at addressing that?
We could. There's lots of things that council could look at in terms of responding to their... And it's all set forth in your parking regulations.
Okay. And so that's why I'm here, is the lack of parking and to do something about that. And also, I'll save it for the next meeting. With all the light industry, there's a lot of problems down there. There's a lot of trash, the auto detailing place, there's trash and junk on the side of the buildings. I'm sure that's a fire, has it? The pool place, that is actually a junkyard at this point. That whole area down there needs to be fixed up. The restaurant got a lot of trash out there, too, and I live right next door. There's an old refrigerator, old fans, there's all kinds of debris. And I did read at one time with the code that they're supposed to have that in some type of, yeah, some kind of structure there. There is not. I got to sit up there, wake up every day, and look out at their trash, every day. And, you know, this is the house that I was born and raised in, and I was able to work with him, the owner, up until a certain point, and then after that, it just fell off. So I'll bring my other concerns about the light industry next month. But the parking is an issue, and so I would like to see something done. I know that we can do something. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to comment on that. Down in that area, 375 Elm, the building there, I hate to be a bearer of bad news, but we have a real problem in that building with everybody, the neighbors, Dr. Detail, trash, garbage, mattresses being dumped in them lots down there.
Absolutely.
We're towing everybody out of them lots. Half of the neighborhood parks in that building there.
Because they can't find a parking space. It's a very dense area. More people are moving there, more unrelated people are moving there. Okay? So you've got one house with three, four, or five cars, so they have no place to go. And the auto place, they also park in the lot.
That's right.
I don't know if it has an agreement with the owner or not.
No, no, he does not.
But he has cars there as well.
The restaurant has an agreement. The old Isabella's, it's called, what's it called now?
Sidro.
Sidro. They have an agreement for parking there at night. But the rest of the lot, it's loaded with cars, can't do the snow removal. They throw mattresses, furniture in the lot, and there's going to be some action taking down there. And listen, the owner of the building would really like to let people park in there, but they trash his property. I mean, they take their cars apart in there, they change their tires and leave all the parts all over the parking lot. So I'm just giving you a heads up.
Well, yeah, well, I would welcome that change because of the fact that the way it is now, it's impacting your quality of life. I drive around the park, I drive around the lot at least two or three times daily, trying to find a parking space. So I'm just looking for some type of resolution.
Thank you very much.
Kevin?
Would you address some issues, police department, as far as the required? As far as the Poplar Street issue with Dr. Detail, we're going to go and have a conversation with them. The violations of some of the cars that are parked there, if they meet a violation, if their vehicle is disabled, if their information is out of date, they can be legally addressed. As long as the commercial part, the only restrictions are with weight. So if you have a, say, construction vehicle over a certain weight, that's prohibited. But if just the mere fact that they have a Dr. Detail van, say, under a certain weight, that's not a legal issue that we can address. We can only offer maybe a cooperation that they can have some more consideration with the neighbors there and be more considerate to it. So we'll work on that probably tomorrow or Friday. We'll go down and see if we can develop a plan to help accommodate with the neighbors' parking. The handicap, we are aware of it. We were beginning, it's a legal process to get it installed and to reverse it. It's a legal process, so we should be able to be able to remove that sooner than later and, you know, open that up. The restricted parking for the park, that's making an opportunity for people to use the park. As far as the handicap, that is for the swing lane to be able to get into the commercial property. We can talk to the company and find out what their delivery dates are, but they do have deliveries that are outside their operating hours. So if we can find out when they accept deliveries and when those trucks are coming in, if we can maybe confine that to a time where it might accommodate more parking on the street, we can try to figure it out as well. But they do, I know through working overnight, they do accept deliveries. The trucks will come in and park on the property overnight hours. They're coming from out of state, and they will come at like 4:00 in the morning and wait for the business to open up to unload. So I'm not sure if that's going to be able to help the cause because you're asking someone from, say, Oklahoma to deliver and then wait in another neighborhood before those parking spaces come up and then access that property overnight, if that makes sense.
I live right there. You know, I'll take your word. I've never seen anybody beyond four or five o'clock. I've never seen anyone on the weekend. Maybe what you suggested to talk to them and see when their delivery...
And they may be able to request of when, you know, they won't accept anyone on the property at a certain time, then maybe it will help out, but, yeah.
Yeah. I don't want to impede anyone, but I'm just looking for a little relief.
Thank you.
I have a color on the any parking space. We're right now in the middle of a renewal of all handicap dedicated parking spaces in the borough. Mrs. Graham at the house you're mentioning was coming back to call me about when they were coming down. Generally, what we do is, once we have everybody back, we take everything down that we have to take down once, and we'll talk to them, so we don't worry about having to move soon.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else for public comment?
Matt O'Handlon, live at 200 West Elm Street, and my office is over at 100 West Elm Street. I was just seeing if there's any update in regard to the redevelopment of that area where the Keystone buildings are.
Nothing, nothing public has to do with that.
Okay.
As soon as council has it before them, you'll know it'll be on page eight.
Is there anything you could recommend in my situation, given that I've been given notice to exit the building? I guess within the next...
You'll need to take it up with your manager, or just unremedy to get it out, unfortunately.
Okay. So there's...
You do.
I'm sorry?
What do you do again?
Well, I manage the Aflac office along with Everwell Business Solutions, and this is a concern of mine because I worked to relocate the office from Bucks County down to here, being from the area. And we've been, we basically got fitted out in our space at the end of July. So it's obviously a little bit of a sting to me and working with the team to develop them in the community and do more philanthropy efforts as I've been working to get more engaged and get them engaged in this community I've been a part of, and I feel like I'm not getting too much direction.
How much square footage do you currently...
We currently have 1,860.
Is that what you need?
In that ballpark, yeah. I mean, somewhere in 1,800, 2,000 would be good.
I know what you're thinking.
We're also trying not to say we do have office space available.
In this building.
In this building.
Yes.
View everything, you'll be right out there.
A few steps away, patio off the, you know, door.
Well, I think the person who represented me over at Keystone placed this building, too, if I'm correct, the same owner as 375 Elm Street. So I'm just looking for...
Yes, sorry, sir. I think I misunderstood what you were talking about. You're talking about the large Sore project down there?
Correct.
Yeah.
So they, I'm sorry, they were before planning commission earlier this month. Planning commission recommended approval of their plan, and it will be before council at our first meeting in March.
In March.
So it is moving forward, and if you come to that meeting, I know you'll have a two-way march.
Okay.
I was misunderstanding.
So they've received preliminary approval from the planning commission. They're coming to council to ask for preliminary approval on their land development plan. So that's the progress with that project.
Right.
Regarding the tenant providing you with notice, I can't speak for the tenant. The tenant will actually, the owner, will be here in March, so if you have that specific question, you're welcome to come and ask them.
I would encourage you to come and ask those questions to the owner.
Okay. Yeah, it's just a tough, I mean, I'm given these notices, and they give you a three-day timeline to respond, and you get it on Federal Express on a Thursday that arrives on Friday. You're out of the office, and they want a response on Sunday, and you don't get it till Monday.
Right. So if you have...
And then you have a deadline, so...
So if you have specific questions or concerns, please come to the meeting on March 7.
Okay. All right.
Take a look at the space on your way out.
Who do I talk to about the space?
You can talk to me.
All right.
Yep, if you're interested.
As you can see, I'm trying to be a little proactive here about this. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have public comment this evening? Council members, we'll start with Mayor Arrington.
Okay. Got a few things. The first one, I promised the VFW I would talk about their blood drive on Sunday. If anyone is interested, we have this posted on social media. If anyone is interested, the best thing you could do is go to the Red Cross website and make an appointment. The Rotary Club just did this, and if you have an appointment, you're right in, right out. But you can also show up, and if they can squeeze you in, they will. Thank you. And then the second thing is we are gearing up for an Irish Week leading up to the parade on March 10. So from March 3 to March 10, we're going to have a series of events. You can find all of these on social media. And we will also next week be releasing a list of businesses that are participating, so having some sort of food special or drink special or other event to celebrate the week. And we hope the community can come join us and get excited for the parade.
Thank you. Which, I'm sorry, which media sites, where are you recommending? What borough-sponsored sites?
So right now, they were released this afternoon on my sites, and I don't know...
And specifically?
The uni-variants in Facebook. The Uni-Varrenson Facebook pages. And Steph, can we add those to ours?
Yep, so we were allowing you the opportunity to announce them this evening, and then they'll go live on all borough media outlets tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And all of these events are being sponsored by the mayor's special events committee? Not any private individuals fitting from it?
It's a partnership for quite a few of them. So we're partnering with the dog park committee for giving out dog treats on Sunday the third. Partnering with yoga home to put on an Irish yoga class, and so on. So it's more of a partnership.
Okay.
Mr. Stogley?
Yes. I just want to ask council permission, one of my goals, that I think we should join the country and the drug problem we have in this country. And I have a lot of family and friends that lost their daughters and close people to them. And I think we need to start something, awareness program in this town, in this borough, because I think it's overdue. I have raised thousands and thousands of dollars already. I don't need any money from the borough, I'm not asking the borough for any money. But I would like to, I spoke to Lieutenant Metz a little bit about it, and we don't have nothing in place right now. And I'd like to speak to him a little bit more on it and put this, come back to council with, it's a discovery right now, okay? But I think we need to do it. I mean, it's just for the younger kids, we have a lot of younger kids in the borough. I grew up in this mess. I came from one of the worst, you see it on TV, to Kensington, I grew up there. It was there then, it's there now, and it's gonna be there for a while. But I think we need to get, make sure that there's no drugs in this town, in Conshohocken. It's only one square mile. And I think that we need to rid that of this town and make our children aware of what's coming at them and what they can become if they take this ugly, ugly, they get involved in this ugly, ugly drug. So just asking council that I can speak with George and we can discuss it a little bit.
Sure.
There's a lot of resources out there right now for the opioid epidemic, even partnering with healthcare systems and organizations. So I would support anything that we want to do.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely, Bob.
Can I address something?
Please.
For all of your information, recently, I met with the Center for Excellence, which is funded by Governor, a grant from the governor's office statewide, because this is a big issue for him. And they have a center in Norristown, and I met with representatives from there last week and distributed to all our officers. And they're a tremendous resource for a person who's already addicted. And they can walk them through every part of the problem. Homelessness, drug addiction, methadone, getting them signed up on Medicaid, everything that they need, you know, an addicted person could need, they can help you, and they stay with you and walk you through the process. Sounds like a good program. They're actually looking for people to help. You know, there are a lot, they, you know, they're coming on board now, but they follow you through the process, and they check, they have counselors, they're all trained, and they check up on you. It sounds like a really good program. And I distribute it to everybody in the department in case they ever encounter people that come to them for help. It's not, usually when we encounter these people, it's either they've overdosed and we're dealing with them in that way, or we're arresting them. And so for your knowledge, for your constituents, for anybody you may know that is suffering from this, and it's only for opioid. It's strictly opioid addiction.
George, is that through Montgomery County, or is it the private?
It's a nonprofit that's funded through the governor's grant. And they seem like, you know, they're social workers, but they have a lot of experience in this field. And they seem like good people and they're trying to do the right thing. So for you personally, or your constituents, if you ever encounter that, they're right in Norristown, they're looking to help people, they can be reached 24 hours a day. You know, somebody will pick up a phone, you might not see them right away. But that resource is available, and it's really good because this is just what we need. You need that holistic approach to deal with somebody in crisis like this. And that's available.
But what I want to do, George, is I want to get to the young children. The ones that are already addicted, I've been through this. I worked in some self-help programs, I mean, there's some great programs out there. But I want to get to the young children that never touched it, that maybe are gonna get involved in it, or someday might, and they can turn away from it when they see what they're gonna become when they get into this drugs. Okay, because it gets, it's ugly.
Oh, of course it is.
And you know it, you see it, but I want to get the ones that are not involved yet an awareness program, what can become of them when they get hooked on this stuff, or to turn away from it. I don't want to get involved with the addicted people. I'm not gonna, I don't want to fund that. I want to fund the young children and have an awareness program, maybe with your department that you can run.
Well, listen, I'll sit down and talk to anybody here about this. And it's kind of foreign to me, you know, I'm from the law enforcement end of it, you know, so, but, you know, I'm going to talk and help and make phone calls and meet people. You know, I'm not exactly sure what resources are out there for that, but I'm sure there's some.
Yeah, there's out, they're out there. It's just to get people knowledgeable, the young children, where this thing can go with them. And I think that you have, the police department has to be involved, so that's why I'm asking for permission.
And I think it's gonna be a multi-pronged effort. It's going to take, working, starting with the children when they're young, keeping them active, having the influence of the police and other role models. But then unfortunately, if they get into trouble, we need to have resources to help pull them back out. So George, if you could get that information to Stephanie and give it to all of us, because that would be valuable for our residents that might be struggling, that might not want to call someone, but if they see it on the borough newsletter or online.
Can we put it on the website?
Right, and put it on the website. And Bob, let's talk about the community center. That's, to me, that's.
Well, that's what I wanted, I wanted to get the community center, one of the facilities involved.
Exactly.
Ten years ago, I brought, from Philadelphia, I grew up in the PAL, the PAL and the Salvation Army. And I brought the PAL in here ten years ago. The chief doctor, he was the chief, and I brought the men, they tried to get the PAL and they fell.
Right.
And they turned me down. I had the White Marsh Police Department involved and other police departments.
We can visit that now.
I mean, Norristown has a great PAL.
Right.
But I think that maybe.
Well, our police officers participate in that.
We have one officer in particular, Jake Rasko, that's active in Norristown.
So I think that's a very valid idea, Bob.
It's a very, very successful program, the PAL. I mean, they save a lot of kids.
And now that we have a lot of kids in the borough.
That's right.
Right, and start with the grade school children and work our way up.
Yeah, we need to start thinking.
Okay, so I think this is something we can get all of our information on, gather our resources, and then get it on a working agenda and get it moving.
Thank you. Thanks, George. Lieutenant?
Thank you, George. Ms. Bart?
Nothing.
I have a couple of things. If anyone has any extra time on Saturday, the 24th, and you would like to take a look at potential new voting machines for the future, Montgomery County Community College, they're showing several different versions of voting machines and looking for public input on those versions of voting machines. That's between 9:30 a.m. and 12:30 p.m. at Montgomery County Community College in the main hall. Also wanted to talk about, in June of 2018, June 2nd to be exact, we're having a, it's a National Learn to Row Day. And at the Conshohocken Rowing Center, they will be having an open house to encourage our local residents and anyone who is interested in the sport of rowing to come down, participate. I even think that there's a possibility that they can sit in some boats when they go down there, so that's exciting. And then as the spring and summer season come along, I want to remind folks, residents of Conshohocken, that we do have kayak and paddleboard launch memberships through the rowing center. So if you jump onto the website and look at the Conshohocken Rowing Center, you can get some information if you're interested in launching a kayak or paddleboat off of the ramps down there. And that's again, for Conshohocken residents, discounted pricing.
Thank you.
I just want to say, if you get a chance, drive past Marywood Park. It's starting to be deconstructed, and we're very excited about the progress they made just in one day.
I have nothing.
Okay.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay. I do have one more thing that I would like to share with everyone, and this has to do actually with our mayor and some of the things he just mentioned. So since January, Mayor Arrington has been very busy getting acclimated to his new position. One of the things that has been a challenge is the mayor's special event committee. Mayor Arrington has quite a few events he would like to start, along with keeping many of the traditional mayor events in the borough. The mayor's special event committee has always raised the money for these events. It's not something budgeted, except for the $2,000 requested by Ambucks every year for the Soebach Sturbe. This does put the mayor in a tricky position. Starting the mayor's special event committee takes time to get established and running. Our mayor has two events coming up, one with our police department, I believe the name of it is Read with Me, in which our police and the mayor will be giving their time and reading with the children of Conshohocken Elementary. The mayor would like to give badges to the children at this wonderful outreach event on March 5th. The mayor also joined efforts with the VFW for the parade kickoff concert and benefit on March 9th. The VFW has asked the mayor if he could supply a porta potty for this event. I am happy to inform the mayor and council and all of our residents that two of our local restaurant owners, Mr. Hampshire of the Great American Pub and Mr. Weber of the Conshohocken Boathouse have graciously offered to pay for the badges and the porta potty for the VFW. So I would like to personally thank Mr. Hampshire and Mr. Weber for their continued support for our borough, and in this instance, for two wonderful events for our children, the veterans, and support of our mayor. It is really truly heartwarming.
That's amazing, thank you. I will reach out to them personally.
Anyone else? Meeting adjourned.